And welcome to the October 30th, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting. If you'd all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance, keep a flag. The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Join us in a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives for protecting their rights and freedoms. Thank you. Has anybody looked at the minutes?
I make a motion we accept the minutes of Monday, September 25th, 2017, regular and executive session, and Monday, October 16th, 2017, regular session.
So moved.
Okay, roll call on that, please.
One correction, sorry, was that October 16th, right?
Sixteenth.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I'm in favor of Monday, the 25th, abstain from the 16th as I wasn't present.
Yes.
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 Do we have any public comment? Okay, we have, first up, we have a few quick, we have an application for a one-day liquor license from Riddle LLC. And I know the applicant is here, so I don't know if you'd like to come up and make a comment, or you just look at a-
Quick motion and you can move on.
Well, everyone's invited.
What is it?
Tomorrow, five to nine at Riddle.
You want to step up to the microphone?
For speaking, we have to speak.
You didn't have to.
Oh, I didn't? Okay.
Go and get a license.
We're having, I'm Nicole Merriman, I'm one of the owners from Riddle. Hi, John. And we are having a Halloween party tomorrow night for the public, for the community, from five to nine o'clock. And we are looking to have the poor guys, poor guys, come and serve beer and wine. And that's what the application is for.
I make a motion.
Okay.
To approve a one-day liquor license for Riddle.
Second.
Okay, first and a second, and all in favor, please?
Yes.
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 There you go.
I'm gonna make jeopardy.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Now you can have everybody who else watching this come over tomorrow.
Perfect, oh, that's great. Thanks so much.
We have an application for a special permit, an annual holiday parade, the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. Is anybody here from the Chamber of Commerce?
No, I'm surprised.
Do you want to do it?
I can do it.
Yeah.
It's going to start, it's the season of illumination, and it's the rotary lights, the Christmas parade, and the Christmas parade will kick off at the Deer Crossing, that will start there this year, so that's a new, a new starting point. And it will travel through South Cape Village and end at the Mashpee Commons. The parade is December 9th. Time of the event is 5:30 to 7:00.
It's always a great event.
Yes, it is.
I need a second on that motion.
We did first, I motion approve the special events application for Mashpee Season of Illumination.
Okay, that's the motion, then I need a second.
Second.
I'm sure the police has signed off on this, right?
Yes, everybody signed off.
There it is, I see it.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Andrew?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
And we have a recommendation for award, for contract, for salt, for Malt and Salt, Morton Salt Inc., from Catherine Laurent.
She's not here.
I don't see Catherine here.
No, I- Make a motion we accept the low bid from Morton Salt for-
Low bid.
We like, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
And it's not Morton Table Salt.
No.
Can't believe we're buying it at this time of year, it's already that time, that's crazy.
I need to think about it.
I'm gonna jump to the back, to the second page, we don't have, I don't know if there's anything in front that we can move along.
Certification of the hiring process.
Yeah, why don't we go to certification of the hire process here, Police Public Safety Dispatch here, Gillian Brown.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Yes.
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 All right, and number two, I have an approval of appointment, Sheriff Stark, Commissioner, Richard Gisorgas.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call on that, please?
Yes.
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 All right. We have an approval of appointment to the Economic Development and India's Industrial Corporation, Patrice Benbatel and Jean Olson.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and roll call?
Yes.
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 Approval of appointment to the Affirmative Action Committee, Joanne Nadeau, Jay Marie Stevenson, and Ken Morris.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 All right, we have an approval of appointment from alternative member to a full member of the American with Disabilities Act Committee, Sidney Davis.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Appointment of, approval of appointment to Mashpee Wakeby Lake Management Committee, Michael-
Repas.
Repas.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 We have the acceptance of resignation from SOU Commission, Glenn Santos.
So moved with regrets.
Second.
And a letter.
And a letter, please.
And roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Glenn's worked really hard for the town.
He has.
Thank you. Acceptance and approval of Lakewood Homeowners Association, Quip County, approved at May 1st, 2017, town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 And we have number nine, approval of the Board of Selectmen policy, number 075, domestic violence leave policy.
I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
A, didn't look like we had anything like this before.
We didn't, we should have, and this is to play catch-up with the reviews of all of your policies.
Okay, why does it require people involved to exhaust all possible leave before they qualify? So, for example, it requires them to use all their sick time before they can qualify for leave under this policy, but what if they're not sick? I mean, if we have somebody who uses three weeks of accumulated sick time, typically they'd have to produce some type of documentation to use it in a block, that, from a doctor validating the fact that they're sick. In this instance, it doesn't seem to apply, and you sort of put the person in the position of potentially not availing themselves of this because they don't want to run afoul of sick time abuse.
And hopefully we don't have any sick time abuse, right?
Right, but so if somebody, if somebody has three weeks of leave, of sick leave, built up, and they're in, they're in a qualifying situation where they're being in an abusive relationship, can they use sick time?
What specific provision are you referring to?
I'm trying to see where it is to.
Duration of leave?
It should be Roman numerals and-
Yeah. B. An employee shall take leave under this policy, shall be required to exhaust all vacation leave, personal leave, compensatory time, and sick time available to the employee prior to requesting or taking leave under this section, unless the town waives this requirement. I just think as, you get people in a rough situation, it's potentially, it puts a chill on their access to this.
Well, I can certainly get clarification for that particular language, I can tell you that I didn't write the policy, however, I can get clarification for you on that. I make a motion, we table until next meeting.
Have a second on that?
Second.
I'd just like to see if maybe, you know, not-
You called me earlier today.
Yeah, I forgot.
It does actually-
I read it on Friday.
It does say unless the town waives this requirement.
Exactly, but what I will do, what I will do is I will speak with the HR Director, get clarification, and this, and then report back.
I guess part of my concern would be, somebody's in a situation, they extricate themselves from it, they're gonna need some time to put the pieces back together, so it might be nice to have a couple, a week of vacation time so that you can move, relocate, deal with all that stuff, so I would think, I would be more comfortable that the, that the requirement to exhaust all leave be wiped away.
Let me get clarity for you.
We have a motion.
Okay.
My second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is the delay.
To table for next week.
Yeah, so roll call on this, please?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Okay, I'm gonna jump back to 6:40, we have a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. You have two members present, Richard and Alan.
You have three, you have one member as well.
So are we convening as the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes.
So I make a motion, we open the meeting as Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
And does the Housing Authority have a quorum?
You do? Well, I don't know if, we are the Housing Trust.
Okay, so we don't need the Affordable, okay, so it's just a one, one-party action.
We have a quorum by you guys.
Yeah, so we have the, we're ready.
Okay.
So this, this- You gotta go through the motion to open it, get a vote.
Get a vote, roll call?
We did.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Richard?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we, everyone roll call then. All right. Now, this discussion is in action on the transfer of the 209 Old Boswell Road and 950 Falmouth Road parcels from the Town of Mashpee to the Affordable Housing Trust in accordance with Articles 29 and 30 on the May 17th annual town meetings as follows. The Affordable Housing Trust vote to authorize the Affordable Housing Trust Chairman to sign the Acceptance of Deed document pursuant to Master Underlaws, Chapter 60, Section 77B. The Board of Selectmen, we need a vote to execute the deed.
Yeah, but that would be after the acceptance, so if you-
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
We have an acceptance, and roll call on the acceptance?
Yes.
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 Okay, unanimous, and now we have the vote to execute the deed.
Make a motion, we authorize the Chairman to sign the documents.
Second.
Okay, we'll have the roll call on that as well.
Yes.
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 Just the five of us, okay.
So that's-
Okay.
I make a motion-
I make a motion, we close the Affordable Trust meeting.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please?
Yes.
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 That's it?
That's it.
Did a great job. Thanks for the help on that. Thanks, Alan. We'll finish this, we have a, well, we have a little bit of time here.
Number 10, you're on the back.
Yeah, we'll jump back to the backside. Number 10, we have the review of capital improvement program schedule, the town manager.
And I do believe that I left them upstairs. So, if you could just skip over to another item, I'll get those for you.
Okay, yep, we'll hold it off. All right, so we have number 11, approval of a petition to erect two 20 mile per hour speed limit signs on Cannon Hook Avenue. The petitioner is Meredith Chadwick. Is Meredith here?
Yes.
Meredith, the-
Do you have a new one on this? You had the figure on it too, didn't you?
Yes.
Yes, I think.
The, gee, oh, wait, yeah, it's made on the figure. The, the signs, their, the cost is $150 apiece, there's two signs, it's $300, that would be payable to the town, the DPW will take care of it, and that's the signs and the installation of the signs. You just need to do some cleaning and let them, so they can go in there and take some from shrubbery or whatnot.
All right, but according, we were reading through the bylaws, and it states nowhere that the town has to purchase them, like our street signs, I purchased the street signs that are exact same thing as the town purchases, at like, three-quarters of the cost of what the town pays, number one, and number two, it doesn't state that the town has to put them in, that, you know, we are allowed to put them in, if I read the bylaws correctly.
So you'd rather buy the signs yourself and install them on the shelf?
Yeah, all we want is approval.
Rodney?
Pursuant to Chapter 90, Section 18, I believe that the standard signs have got to be in conformance with the uniform policies.
Yeah, no, these are this, these are from a sign, a state, you know, shop, that I buy all the, the street signs, which conformed exactly to what the town has too. And signed there, if, you know, through that company, I can pay like $50 for a street sign, or a, yeah, a speed limit sign.
But they have to be the same size and design?
Yeah, it is, same exact shape, size, you know, it's illuminated, and the only thing that I'm adding to it is that it's illuminated in the dark. That's possible.
So, can, can we do this, can we have this subject to the approval of the, it would be the DPW Director or yourself? So why don't you coordinate with the DPW Director, get approval with that, rather than pay the town? Would that work?
As long as she's here.
Well, I, I think she is. So, you can, you can always come in and talk to us.
Make any conformance with the town regulations, that's all.
Yeah, as long as, I just figured, as long as we keep it with what the town-
You don't have to put it in to one person.
There's, you know, it's, $300 is truly, you know, especially when we're all seniors on the, on the block.
I'll make a motion, we approve the petition with the signs purchased by the homeowners in compliance with state and local bylaw requirements certified by the DPW.
Second.
Great, thank you, no, we will check with, with the DPW about the height, and we've got the posts already, so we will.
Perfect.
Great, thank you so much.
A roll call on that, please?
Yes.
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 And I have number 12, we have a approval of resolution adopting the 2017 Mashpee Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
This is a plan that you guys approved to go to MEPA or FEMA for review, or MIMA.
So what are we gonna do with it?
This, this, once you get this signed, I have to scan it and send it to Cape Park Mission.
No, no, I don't mean that, like, what are we, so it's, list a whole bunch of hazards and a whole bunch of stuff we should do, and what are we gonna do about it?
Well, I, we have sat down as a group to put that together, and I'm sure we're gonna sit down a group and put it, you know, into, and comply with what we've, we've placed in there. I know that some of it is the flood mitigation too, which we've already done a lot of work towards getting-
Yeah, I like to see the stuff get ticked off and fed into everybody's capital plans and operating requests.
Agree with you there.
Okay, I need a-
You got it first, and a second.
I need a roll call on it, please?
I make a motion, we adopt a resolution adopting the 2017 Mashpee Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second. Second, that's it, and roll call?
Yes.
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 I'd like to get those, the CMT documents.
6:40. Okay, we have a 6:50, we have Mashpee TV, the annual report. Bill?
Well, you've got the report in front of you, a summary of that report, there's a full report up in the town office if you want to look at it as far as what was brought forward. Bill is here if there's any questions on it that you have.
It's pretty hard to tell without the numbers.
The numbers are in the-
I'm just saying, I got no numbers, so I don't have anything to-
There's a budget summary on page three.
Okay.
The full plan is up in the, in the, oh, I got it, but, if you need it, if you want the whole plan, we can bring it back to another meeting, it's up to you.
Um, I'd be interested in seeing it, I'm not gonna hold it up, but-
We'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Does this require a vote, an annual report?
I don't, I don't think so. It does, no, it's just-
No, it's just a presentation.
You just tell us whether you're doing good, bad.
We're doing great.
To go to hell, we should tell you to go to hell.
We did that once.
We're not going back there. Moving forward all the time.
Can you tell me if that little disconnect was resolved with the YouTube? I was, I had mentioned it to Wayne last week that I had a-
Didn't have to do with them though, it had to do with the way they put it up on the, on the YouTube channel, there was a box that they didn't check out, I checked with that.
So it's been resolved?
It has been resolved.
So it's still available on Channel 18, all of the-
Yes.
As well as the-
Yeah, there's a complete archive for at least the last two years of every meeting that's been taped, so.
And everything's fine, going well?
Everything's great, yep. We're getting ready to open up a studio at the high school. We are building them a brand-new studio that we started this summer, so another week or two, and we'll invite you to a grand opening of the new studio, so.
You're a busy guy.
Is cord cutting eating into your revenues? Are they dating a decline?
At this point, no, not at all.
Are you worried about-
Mashpee's a great community, they love their TV here, so they're not cutting the cord as much as maybe up in the city, so, so far, so good.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Keep up the good work.
Go ahead, you, that's not, that's not a posted public meeting, so you can drop into it.
Oh, he has one thing for us, right?
Yes.
Is that the information needed for item number 10, right?
Yes.
Capital Improvement.
The schedule is attached.
I'll give you one more.
We're good, good now.
So the dates for the-
I haven't seen any.
On the back.
Oh, they, all right, okay.
Are right after your budget, you slide right into.
Is this for informational purposes?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay.
But if somebody wanted to attend one of the CIP meetings- You're not, you're not looking for a vote, I don't think. No, I'm just, if there's a conflict with the schedule, then you need to notify me sooner rather than later.
Okay. All right, we're good. Awesome, thanks, thanks for that, Russ. We have, a little early, but I see the Mashpee Commons is here, and if you'd like to come up and start the presentation, that'd be great. Sure, absolutely. Ah, yeah, good to see you, good to see you.
I'm sorry I wasn't able to get up the other day.
And you've had some busy events, the other day I was at the meeting at the, was it last week where Russell, there was quite a turnout that we had at the library.
Library, yes, yeah.
Pretty amazing, so it was nice to have the public voice their opinion for different ideas, and some of them, you know, they had a lot of the similar requests, so it was interesting. I'm sure it's, it's gonna be difficult to put everything together and come up with a plan.
I think you'll see later on, in Russ's presentation, he's already incorporated some of their feedback, which is, so this is kind of, I guess, a dynamic process, right, where we'll be.
Certainly, yes.
Well, first off, I just wanted to say I appreciate the letter of condolences from, from the board to, to our family. And, but it's also a pleasure to be here with you tonight and continue the process that we started here a month or so ago with, with the planning board in this very same place where we talked about our intention, which was to engage with the citizens of the, of the town, with the intention of trying to use the feedback that we were receiving from them and, and the elected officials, to try and design the, the area around existing development in Mashpee Commons, so that it was, so it was a collaborative effort to try and both come up with the needs that the current citizenry and the elected officials feel it would add to the whole, to the town, and to Mashpee Commons itself. As I mentioned, it's a dynamic process, and I think we'll all learn a lot in the process. I have been here, as I mentioned, in front of the planning board, I hate to, I think next year will be 40 years since I first opened a office in Mashpee Commons next to the old post office. So over that time, it's been wonderful to know many of you, get to know many of you and others, of the citizens and elected officials in town, and to hear what people want, and also, one good thing about the citizens of Mashpee is they're not shy in expressing what they would like to see. And, of course, there's that on the one hand, and then there's the financial realities of what can be provided, and then there's the whole process of getting from where we are today to a plan that would work for the citizens, for the selectmen, the planning board, and, and our company. Tonight I have my, my team here, many of you met before, you've met Russ Preston, you've met Tom Ferrante, of course, that's my, next to Tom is my son Nathaniel, Chase, Mary Durr, next to her, and next to him, John Connell, and Tiger Brown in the front row there. All of these folks are part of the team that will be working on this, and Russ has, you know, worked for us in Mashpee Commons for, I think, eight years, and then went on to start his own planning firm located in Boston called Principal, Principal, Principal Planning Firm. So he, and done a lot of work in New England, not only in the, in the Boston area, but in northern New England, so he has small-town, medium-town, and large-town experience. So I think we have the makings, or, and we're just beginning a process- So I think we have the makings, and we're just beginning a process, that could lead to, you know, a wonderful outcome in terms of providing the things that we've heard that the town citizenry have requested. I think one of the things that we would all like to do is to come up with a process that people were, are comfortable with, that is transparent, that is set, that is really not just us, or not, not just you, but us collectively to trying to figure out how to go forward and, and because if we can make that process more efficient and less costly, then we can use the, the savings in that process to create more, whether it's public space, whether it's affordable housing, which is a big, big articulated, largely articulated goal of the town. But, you know, in these days of, you know, layers of regulatory improvement and, and nimbyism and stuff, that we, that it can be a very long process and a very expensive process, and to the degree to which we can streamline that. So we're really, really are pulling in the same direction, then I think we can utilize the savings to not only create a better result, but also a result that has things that are, you know, maybe more long-term and, and in their return. Or, or I should put it this way, that the return is, is not a financial return, it's a qualitative return to the people that come to Mashpee Commons, that come to Mashpee. I mean, I always often say that I really enjoy people just looking out the window when I'm in my office there and just see people sit, sit on the benches and just, you know, people watching or just being part of the community. They're not that, even though that was kind of a fundamental thing in, in the original historic towns where people came to town just to meet with each other. You know, we started off as, as a primarily retail environment. That's what kind of got us going, that, that powered the engine that allowed us to continue. But really, retail, as we know, is a changing phenomenon now. So much of it is e-commerce, Amazon, et cetera, which is this thing this week about CVS merging, potentially merging with Aetna. So it's changing, and I think we're, we as a, as a limited partnership feel that vulnerability, but the town does too. There are lots of retail centers that are not doing well, and, and so I think the idea of, of having more housing, more mixture of uses, so it's not so reliant on, on, on the retail component. But I think we call it, and maybe becoming even a cliche now, but it's referred to more and more as placemaking. And, and that's what it is. It's, it's trying to make a place that the people of this town and the surrounding towns are comfortable to come and just be. Not have to shop, not have to do anything, but just to be in the social intercourse and, and interfaces between those people. Allow people to get to know each other better and it leads for better community. It leads for, it leads to all kinds of things like business development, entrepreneurship and stuff, when people can actually come together. In this age of iPhones, when people are texting most of the time, if we can create places where people interact with each other unexpectedly, you know, going to the post office, running into somebody, you know, and also places for our younger members of our community. As we know, they're attracted to urban environments and, and to the, the kind of complexity of a town center or, or city center. I think we can create that here and retain our young people, as well as having housing that's also suited to them. So, you know, just like many of you here who run for elected office and who are, you know, want to create better things for the community, we, we want to do that too. And, but what we really want to do is work with you and work with the members of the planning board and the citizenry in these series of meetings. And we, we've scheduled, I think, two more from the ones that we've already had, but, you know, we'll know when we've done enough. We can have more of those until we feel like we're getting the message, not only to it, what we're, what, what our learning has been over the years, but also hearing and listening and hearing what people want. And of course, when you listen to some, someone and you say, oh, well, let's use open space as an example, that's something that's often articulated. Well, really, what does open space mean? Does open, it's not going to, it's not going to be a place necessarily in the middle of Mashpee Commons that is like a wilderness trail. It's more probably a park or a place where people can sit, where people can listen to music, where people can. So, so really getting, getting or entering into a dialogue when we can get more specificity about what things like open space are, then we can actually produce that and, and, and work collectively to do that. I think that the other thing that's exciting, and we've heard this from members of the commission, members of the Commonwealth, the government Commonwealth, is that this is, this, if we are successful in what we're discussing here tonight and in these various open meetings, if we're successful in actually accomplishing a polling together, that would actually be something that could be influential for the, for the entire state of Massachusetts and, and for the surrounding states. So when we started in Mashpee Commons thirty, forty years ago, I balk at even saying forty years, but what we've accomplished together is really, it's become a, a place that people respect and admire. And, and so our intention is just to continue that. I asked Nathaniel to come tonight so that you would know that, you know, it's not just reliant on me. We are, have a succession plan there for the, for these, for Nathaniel and other of the people in the audience to just keep, keep going and continue our, our efforts and our ownership and, and our investments in the communities. I might add one more thing, and then I'd like to introduce Russ, who has about a twelve-minute presentation that he liked to make, that includes slides and stuff. But one of the things that came up, I think, in either the planning board presentation or one of the others, is by using techniques such as form-based codes, form-based zoning, which basically provides for what the, what the buildings on a certain block might look like, you know, what their height might be, what they would include, et cetera. But ha, also has flexibility within that. If the use, if the needs of the town change. If we are able to come up with or use form-based codes, I think that we could also, one of the, one of the shortcomings of Mashpee Commons owning this property, hopefully there's some longcomings, but one of the shortcomings is the velocity at which the, the development has manifested itself. In other words, some people say, well, you've been talking about this for so long, you know, we like, we need more housing and we need it now. We believe that by adopting a form-based code, that we could actually work with other development companies to, you know, sell lots, sell a block or something. We, we would have our own architectural review, but the form-based code itself would be something that would be, we'd all agree on together. So we could actually bring more capital in from, from, could be local developers or it could be others on the Cape that would come in and build their houses, their buildings, et cetera, which then would manifest the thing in a, you know, longer ti, shorter timeframe. So I think in terms of, of creating tax base, in terms of, of creating what we all need, now we know the demand for different types of housing, and Russ will show that in his presentation, is huge right now. I think those things would manifest more quickly if we, if we can allow that, allow our process to create that kind of an environment. And then we would be like, in those cases, that we would be the master developer, and then there would be sub-developers that would come in and do certain things according to, to a plan that we all had agreed upon, so.
Sounds good, as long as it's not Bornstein.
No comments on that. But moving right along, I would like to introduce Russ, who I think most of you know, and, and then at the end of his presentation, happy to be available for any questions.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, members of the board. So Bob said quite a bit of what this presentation covers. I think a few of you may be seeing some of these slides before, but we felt it was appropriate, just as we're kind of getting started here, to, to share again with, with everyone as a, around the same table. You know, and as Bob said, for us, you know, looking at Mashpee today, the, the results of this work have really manifested in a, in a public life in Mashpee Commons that is, is remarkable. As we, you know, as I travel around the country and I say Mashpee, and people, people know the project and have come to understand it as a, as a place where sort of this idea of placemaking and, and mixed-use development has, has really come from. So, you know, looking back, you know, it, it's really staggering to see the changes. And it's exciting to sort of look back as we're starting to look forward now and realize, okay, well, what, what big ideas are there that we want to put into the plan and see, see built? You know, because I think when, you know, in the sixties, it was probably never conceived of that this gray field, really in the, in the planning profession, that's what it is, is a gray field, you know, asphalt full of parking is, would be converted into really a mixed-use walkable neighborhood. And it really has, you know, Mashpee Commons has been studied as sort of a, you know, on the forefront of, of that process. And this comes out of, you know, the, a whole, you know, design thinking around how you create great places like this called, called new urbanism. And, you know, looking back at some of the previous plans from Mashpee Commons, the idea of creating a walkable, mixed-use neighborhood is really fundamental to the goal. It's just how, you know, what is that neighborhood like? What's the character of those streets? What are the character of those new ta, greens, parks, you know, and trails that might exist? You know, so, you know, the dedication to design is something that's also been an ongoing theme for Mashpee. And if you look here, you know, really, what's so perfect now is that the space between the buildings is actually starting to really have a public life. And the uses that are adjacent to it really need to be flexible as we go forward. You know, maybe more office space, more job creation, but not necessarily big national retail tenants. So I think the character of these future phases could be, could be quite different than what Mashpee Commons is today. But what we, what we know is that it has to be, it has to serve the community. You know, what happens between those buildings, we really want to be authentic and come out of the dialogue with the town and the folks who come daily and use this place. You know, so as you look here at this slide, you know, those are the fir, a couple of the new buildings. And really, that was, that was Mashpee Commons dipping its toe in the residential development model, looking at multifamily and looking at how do we deliver new types of residential homes to, to Mashpee Commons. And, you know, as all of you know, that was through a forty B process, and it was an arduous process. It took years of, of not just entitlement, but also financing and, and quite a bit of, for lack of a better term, brain damage to get done. And it really has made it difficult to continue. But as everyone can look and walk down that street now, you know, those buildings are a successful addition to the common. So really, what, you know, a part of this dialogue is, you know, how do we implement? But I'll, I'll come to that later, you know, is as we build these new streets, what's the character and what are the places going to create? Before we get to implementation, and I think this really fundamentally looks at, you know, at the issues of the sort of commercial core here is that the zoning fundamentally is still designed on the chassis of this sort of auto-oriented development. And, you know, I think looking at that as a, as an implementation path has made it very difficult for us to, to move forward with more multifamily residential in that area. So this is Mashpee today. You know, those buildings we were just looking at are right here. And all of the gray areas are the expansion space, you know, expansion, expansion land that is available for, for the visioning that we've been doing. And we've, you know, we've come around a few questions, you know, the first being really, what does it take, you know, to create a wonderful neighborhood? And, you know, in addition to all the housing options that we've heard from folks in town already, you know, it's also what happens to these, you know, these new open spaces. You know, and as Bob said, you know, this might, you know, long-term, we don't think this is just grass, you know, and a couple of trees. It's what is the vision for that space? And, you know, and as we, as a, as a development team have looked at it and sort of as practitioners of placemaking, you know, have done a number of sketches, but really it's how do we make this real now? And, and how can this come, you know, build from the community as, as a shared vision? And then what, and then what happens along the way as we build out more and more of the neighborhood? And additional parks and squares might have different character, might have different housing options. But really, looking at, you know, there's a well-understood set of best practices around how you create a great, walkable neighborhood. The question is, is what does it look like? What does it feel like? And how does that become part of Mashpee in a real, endearing way? And, you know, you look back at the old postcards of Cape Cod, you know, there are a lot of lessons from these places that we're trying to draw on. And then how do we mix those with all of the issues of contemporary life? Parking being one of them, you know, two, three-car garages, all those issues, but making it still function on that traditional neighborhood pattern. And as Bob mentioned, the, you know, the idea of really using what are called sort of place-based tools, form-based code is being one of them, to really provide a predictable outcome, but flexibility on uses and other types of elements that allow this place to build out in an authentic way. And then this gets to sort of how, part of the reason this discussion started to happen is what, you know, what can Mashpee Commons as a regional partner do to, to improve the environmental health of the region? And if you, you know, all of you are aware of, of the issues around the water, watershed and nitrogen issues. And, you know, as the Cape Cod Commission came to us, and really looking at how can a wastewater treatment plant adjacent to Mashpee Commons be better utilized as a resource to, to, you know, address these issues around nitrogen leaching into the, into the waterways? And, and the result is, you know, as part of that solution is actually looking at these historic settlement patterns, you know? And I love, you know, when you drive around New England, you see those signs, thickly settled, you know, sort of, you know, how do we build compact? And we, you know, create our, be efficient with our, our infrastructure. And, you know, that's not a new lesson, you know, the Sierra Club nationally has pivoted its platform to actually seeing building of places that are walkable and mixed-use as a, as a key solution to a number of their environmental concerns. And, you know, you look, you can, you know, you do a Google search yourself, you'll see, you know, hundreds and hundreds of articles about this idea of walkability being not just a solution for the environment, but also good for public health. So what does that really look like? And how can we manifest that here in Mashpee Commons? And a lot of it is, you know, connecting Mashpee Commons better to the surrounding communities. You know, we've already seen that come out of a number of the, the dialogues we've had over the last month or so. But then what, what else can we do? Not, you know, not just to address the mobility, but also issues of food security, of public health, of, of, you know, aging in place and providing all those opportunities to a really diverse community. And then we've already talked about open space, but really all sorts of ideas around what, what can that open space network include? And this gets us to, you know, the housing question. And, you know, we've, you know, we've delivered a number of apartment-style houses, housing over the years, and it's a hundred percent leased. You know, it's a wait, there's a waitlist. We know, we, we now know there is a very good market for living in a walkable neighborhood. But I think we need to look at how we fill out that spectrum of housing choice. So, you know, a lot of folks are using the term missing middle. So if you think about sort of an apartment building, you know, you get an apartment on the second, third, fourth floor of a building, or a single-family house. But there's no middle, there's no middle, you know, there's townhouses, you know, some of the images on the screen, cottages, you know, all of these sort of duplex units, you know, those are the types of housing that can provide opportunities for starter families or for, you know, young professionals or for older folks downsizing to stay in Mashpee and to stay in the community. So we think this is an idea that we need to work on, both from affordable, capital A affordable, all the way through market rate. And how do we provide that affordable workforce and, and that full spectrum of housing choice? And this is something, you know, some of us went to the One Cape Conference earlier this year that the Cape Cod Commission went on, which was a really educational event. And, you know, one of the charts that stood out for us was this housing study that they were doing. And looking at, you know, really what the need is, is for a number of these folks who are still in their single-family home, but have nowhere to move out of, to provide families the ability to buy into those homes. It's actually an interesting problem that the Cape Cod Commission has, has, has identified. And, you know, this chart kind of says. And, you know, this chart kind of says that story quite well, where, you know, if we can get a few of those other bars to come up on this chart, we can start to balance out the housing needs in the, in the region. Um, and then this comes back to, you know, the big idea of how can we support the economic prosperity of Mashpee? And, you know, if you look at a number of the tenants who have been there for decades now, this really is a home for a lot of businesses and a lot of folks' livelihood. So, how can we further support that in building a resilient economic, local economy here? Um, you know, and you'll see the character of a number of these new buildings does, it does have some commercial, but it's not as sort of traditional storefront retail, you know, might be more suited for office, or, or slightly more affordable space for, for other types of retail. But the idea of how do we attract jobs? How do we bring in more types of commercial activity that can provide Mashpee a more resilient economy? And if you look at these old postcards of, you know, sort of main streets around the region, um, you know, that character is still there. It's just how can we adapt that to the sort of contemporary needs of, of today? And it comes back to this idea of civic life, this idea of, you know, folks can go out into, into the public realm, the sidewalk, the streets, you know, the parks, and bump into each other, and not really necessarily have to buy a coffee or, or shut, you know, get, buy a few shirts from someplace. But really, just come and be, like Bob said. And, and that might help to attract folks who want to start businesses, who want to, you know, be here for a variety of, of commercial reasons. And that idea of placemaking has really been identified by a number of states around the country as a key economic development tool. And, you know, I think the national retail tenants such as L.L. Bean is, is actually seeing the benefits of those as well. Rather than being at, at some other commercial center, other mall, they chose to come here because it's, it's got more life to it. But this is also on the small end as well, like what other little things can we do, like the bandstand, uh, that can help support the local community and help bring in more culture and opportunity for folks to really enjoy themselves, that helps support this as a great place to, to, to work as well? So, those were sort of the four questions that we kind of started this journey on here. And the process, which, which our office has, has, has used in another, number of other towns, is really about getting feedback and really, you know, bringing together everyone involved to have a dialogue. And then make sure that we revisit things and refine things until we understand together what's really going to work and why. And this, this process, we sort of look at it as in four parts, you know? And we're still, this meeting tonight is really still coordinating, coordinating this is making sure everyone understands what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the process is. And then the next step is now we actually engage. And actually mean, we come together around, in a way that we actually engage in a, in a conversation, a dialogue to come to, you know, sort of the big ideas, what's the vision? And then what are the conditions that we need to know collectively to move forward into design? And if we all can have a, you know, sort of aspirational vision defined and then go into design where there's consistently, there's compromises that have to be made, we'll have a more transparent and better dialogue around what design choices do we need to make. And then, contrary to a lot of processes, then implementation follows. You know, if we have a strong plan and we have, you know, folks who sort of say, yes, that's, that's what I see in the future for the town and for Mashpee Commons, then the choices we need to make around implementation can be much, much easier. And we've seen this happen in a number of communities for, for very complex projects. And I think if we can really have a good dialogue, it will help this process along. So, the schedule to date is sort of this phase one, really the, you know, how do we engage around coming together with a, a vision is, you know, we're, we're sort of here at the, at your meeting tonight, but there's two more public meetings, uh, on the December 2nd date at 10:00 a.m., we'll be at the library. This will be essentially the same meeting we held last Tuesday, so folks who couldn't make that meeting could attend on Saturday. And we'll, of course, tell everyone at that meeting what we learned at the first meeting. And then this, and then the final visioning meeting will be, it says TBD, but it's actually been confirmed, it's going to be at the Planning Board on December 6th in this room, at their regular scheduled meeting at, of 6:30. So, what have we learned so far? And, and just a brief overview, we haven't totally processed all of this from last Tuesday, but I wanted to kind of share with you a little bit of it. You know, it was a standing-room-only event, you know, folks were really, I think we had over a hundred people, you know, uh, at, at the library there, and really engaged and dialogue. And this was a, a great set of people who really cared about the future of Mashpee Commons. So, you know, some of the surveys that we got back, you know, I grabbed a few here, just to give you a sense of where the, the feedback is. You can read that there, but, you know, this does reflect what we've talked about. We really do care about, you know, this, creating this as a great place to live, to work, and to, and to, and just to be. You know, then, of course, I thought this one was an interesting response. You know, parking came up in the meeting, but it came up way later than I thought it would. And we all, you know, I think every place I work and, and, you know, the communities I do talk with, parking's always an issue. Parking's an issue everywhere. So, I think managing parking and how we do that going forward is, it's loud and clear, that's got to be part of the, part of the plan. Um, yeah, I thought this was an interesting one that, you know, how do we get across North Market Street, you know? And how do, how do folks better connect between those two, really two different sides of Mashpee Commons? And there was a, there was more, more folks brought that up than I had expected. And then, you know, this idea here sort of, I thought echoed, you know, a bit of the need for community space and need for folks to be able to come together, both outside, but also indoors. And, and then also, this idea of, you know, the Cape space, which is a co-working facility, this idea of how do small businesses or entrepreneurs or freelancers, how can they live in Mashpee and, and have a, you know, a low overhead place they can actually do their work? So, that was an interesting idea that came up a number of times. So, we had folks do a number of mapping, and this is great because it, you know, it gives us a variety, a different look at, at the, at the way people think about Mashpee Commons. And, you know, these are all the maps we looked at, and, you know, some of these, some folks did their dot, dots and, you know, made comments. And, you know, we're going to try and put this all into one map and continue to sort of add to that. So, we start to get a real sort of mental picture of where the community's thoughts are on a, on a physical, uh, map of Mashpee Commons. Um, you know, so the, you know, some folks talked more than they wrote, other folks wrote more than they talked, but the feedback was, been very good. You know, and we'll, we'll share all this online, so if folks want to dive into it deeper, they can. Um, yeah, it, it's sort of interesting, the idea of these trail networks and how do you access trout ponds? So, there's a number of sort of layers to this that are starting to emerge already. And then, you know, in the interest of making this easy for folks to, to participate in, we do have a Facebook page, Mashpee Commons by Design, and we, we did, we were able to livestream the event, so if folks are interested, they can go back and look, look at the video of it now and see everyone's sort of, you know, all of the groups that participated, their, their comments that they made after doing these activities. And we'll do that again going forward at the, at the other meetings. And then we're also, another activity we had them do was what we call a visual preference survey. And this is really, you know, a photo's worth a thousand words. So, how do, you know, how do we gain another perspective from folks? And you can see here that it's pretty clear what types of buildings folks are not in favor of and don't see as a, a part of the future of Mashpee Commons. And, you know, some of the comments are more informative than others, but it's pretty clear on the other end of the spectrum what folks are gravitating towards and, and what they would enjoy. So, we have about 65 images, sort of a range of, of sort of, you know, of things to look at. And we'll, we'll bring these back to the, the next event and have the next round of people add to them and continue to add to them. So, really, we'll start to build a, a pretty robust understanding of folks' desires in that way. So, again, there's a schedule, and, um, you know, thank you for making the time to, to have us tonight. Well, we're happy to answer any questions or have a conversation about this.
Anything?
I think the presentation was very, very good. Thank you.
Following the meetings on Facebook, so I think that's a great thing. Watched all the videos, it's, good take.
Good, good. We were worried that it was just going out there into the ether.
I don't know, it's, it's out there.
Is there any kind of template of this type of zoning that has been done anywhere else?
Uh, yeah, there's, um, there are, form-based codes are, are used all over the country now.
They are?
Yeah. You know, we have a colleague who's been mapping it, where, not just codes that are being used, but codes that have been adopted and built under. So, it's, it's not a new concept.
What about to Massachusetts?
Uh, the city of Somerville is actually about to overhaul their entire city zone to be a form-based code.
So, it's...
And how do you bring another developer in to help build your vision?
So... Okay, go ahead. Bob can, can chime in if I don't get it totally right. But the, uh, the, what the code does is sort of, one, you know, idea, one of these big projects need to have a big, a vision. And a vision, and that's sort of brought together in a master plan. And what we find when we do these codes in other, other parts of New England is, that's essential, because then the code by design can actually help deliver that vision. So, the, the idea here is that we could, you know, in the, in the form-based code, identify what kind of character we want in a certain part of the, of Mashpee Commons or a certain part of town. And if someone comes in, whether it's not Mashpee Commons, they'll still have to create that vision, the types of buildings that are there, the types of uses that might be expected to be there, the types of open spaces or streets they might have to build, you know, if they were to take a whole block, they might have to put a lane in or something. So, it can be very nuanced in how, what, what it requires of you, much more than sort of your traditional Euclidean, it's called Euclidean zoning. So, that sort of allows, you know, with the master plan and a form-based code, you know, a real clear picture by design what they, what they can create. And then I think there's even another layer, a set of design guidelines, which would ensure that the sort of level of architecture and the level of design commitment around that would, would be up to, up to muster. And in Massachusetts, that's hard, you know, the logistics of that being actually part of zoning is tricky, so we usually rely on the design guideline. But it's, uh, it can work quite well. And we, we've, we've had a few, few of these codes in the last, the last couple of years be adopted in, up in Maine.
Russ, you use, uh, just so I know myself around that, you're using two terms a lot, the form-based code and the form-based zoning. Are they one and the same, or are they two different things?
Uh, it would be yes and no.
That's my type of answer.
Form-based codes could be zoning, where they're actually, they're actually part of the city zoning ordinance, you know, they're, you know, sort of, the town's ordinance is right in there. Or they could be through another, they could be a form-based code that's part of a master plan entitlement. So, it's not necessarily the zoning, but as part of the large master plan, it becomes, becomes part of the approval and part of the expectations of, of the implementation of the project. So, the document themselves might be very similar.
But it's two different things.
Yeah, but fundamentally, it's about how do we establish a shared vision and then craft zoning that talks about the physical elements of, of creating that vision?
Am I correct in assuming you kind of do one without the other, is what you're telling me?
Uh, you need some zoning that will allow, that really supports creating a mixed-use neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
You know, supports sort of that, you know, that goal. And then, you know, I think a, a requirement of that could be that it had, that the project come forth with a form-based code to create that neighborhood. So, I think, I think that, you could do it that way.
So, Euclidean zoning was about separating uses. And that's what we've had for the last 50, 60 years.
Right, right.
Now, we're, we're realizing that actually mixture of uses is more vibrant, more robust, more like the historic towns were. So, we're trying to go back to that. But the other part of that, John, would, is that, um, with these, I want to say restrictions, but it's not restrictions, it's really, um, it's, it's a vision. It's, it's, so if, if I sold you, or Tom, more likely, a, a lot or, or a, a block, you know, a square block, then that, he would be buying it knowing that, that this was allowed on that block. So, that it actually, the delivery system just reduces the, the uncertainty. And, and not only for the person that bought it and developed it, but also for the lender who's going to lend against it. So, the whole idea here is to take friction out of a system that's become very onerous and, and really has prevented us from providing the housing to our people that we really need to do. So, we're hoping that that can...
Just out of curiosity, what kind of reception have you gotten from the Cape Cod Commission with this concept?
The conversations we've had with them have been supportive, with the staff. And that they're looking at form-based coding, that sort of that whole practice of doing zoning in that way, as a, as an opportunity and a tool that the Cape should be more focused on. And it's...
Preferred, really.
Prefer, it is a preferred, because what it does is it, it says what towns want. Where most zoning sort of says what you can't do, and then, you know, the town, the city planner in Somerville has a good analogy, he tells the story that most Euclidean zoning is like Play-Doh. Says how much you can have, kind of where you can put it on the lot, but it doesn't, you can make a dinosaur out of it. You don't, you can, so the character of these places is very valuable. Where a form-based code says, here's what we want, very clearly. And you can, you know, within that range, uh, it's more like Legos, you know, it gives you a, gives you a good, clear system of what you can build. And that predictability would give some confidence to someone, a third party that might come in and want to build in Mashpee Commons that, that otherwise might not have the confidence to invest and, and take on a risk of, of, of building a project in Mashpee.
I've been very fortunate to be around long enough to see most of Mash, Mashpee Commons, and it's, I know over the years, the same thing happens. You look at an idea such as this and, oh my God, that's, that's so far advanced and whatnot, is it too much for Cape Cod or this and that? And the success is right there, so, you know, I'm, I'd be willing just to go on a track rocket, but, but it's going to be explaining all over again, a whole new concept.
Yeah. No, and I think the form-based code concept is, it shouldn't be a scary thing, I mean, we're, we're going to small communities in Maine that are...
That's why I asked, for my own use, I'd want to know the difference, because I'm sure someone's sitting there saying, talking code, they're talking zone, what are they talking?
Might be far more complex things we'll need to, to project than form-based code. We can make it fairly elegant.
Russ, a couple, a couple of questions. And, you know, I understand the, having the architectural control, I think it's imperative because I think it's, everything that the Commons has done so far has been very, very well-done in the design. So, to have that continuation of the design makes perfect sense to me. Some of my concerns, um, the, the housing, which I, the Mash, the Cape, Cape Cod Commission and I, years ago, it had a little bit of a go-around because I, I was always looking for a place for a family like myself. My children have left, it was time for me to sell my home, or my children will move into my home, and I go, I need an apartment. I don't need a big house, or maybe I'll buy a small condo. So, I think it's a great idea, it gives me a place to go, and it's convenient to, to my family as well. So, I, I think it's great, and the, and the Mash, and the Cape Cod Commission has changed because I see it, they call it the, the growth incentive zoning. They've, they've created these zones where they want growth, and they want things to happen, and more of it's in happening in Vastable, and I'm glad that we could probably take advantage of that, and we can make it happen here as well, and the commission will welcome that. Couple of my concerns, we have, we have four major roads that, highly traveled roads that divide those, those sections. And I, I know you want it to be somewhat cohesive, how, how do we get around these roads? How do we make this work, whether it be Job's Fishing, 151, Route 28, and Great Neck Road South? How, how do we make that happen without disrupting the flow of traffic? Is there any thought process on that?
So, the, the rotary is, you know, has been a topic that's come up.
For a hundred years.
Right, right. So, I, you know, in the discussions to date, kind of planning for this, you know, Mashpee Design process and talking to folks already in the community, I think there are a few, few opportunities. The first is, um, is there a short-term thing we can try just to see if it, the geometry could be improved to make the thing work now better? And, you know, I think there was some construction going on, and it's funny, we've, in one of those communities in Maine, we went out during one of our events, and the DPW, the police chief, a couple of folks got really motivated and got a hundred orange cones and said, we're going to fix this intersection like tomorrow. So, I think there's maybe a short-term thing with just the way the trajectory of the throats going in and out of the rotary could be fixed. So, that, that's sort of one hypothesis that we have. Second is, long-term, you know, it's been sort of looking at the traffic engineering models. You know, this idea of sort of traffic is water is a little bit of a fallacy, where folks have, you know, there's, there's, the driver is self-aware, they're not just going to stay in the pipe because they're, you know, they have no, no choice. But if you provide choices for drivers, they can naturally diffuse into a network of streets. And I think right now, the, you don't have a lot of choice... And I think right now, the, you don't have a lot of choices to get from one side of the rotor to the other. You know, some, like, I even, you know, I sneak through the back of North Market to get up here from that, you know. So these little shortcuts that exist now, but not many. So I think as we maybe add further development on other sides of those roads going into the rotary, creating additional shortcuts would benefit the, the burden that the rotary has itself. Uh, and then I think the idea of, you know, making a, a distinction between good traffic and bad traffic, and the idea that, you know, if you go to a downtown, or you go to a town center, or you go to a, uh, you know, a, a happening vibrant place that has commerce and has life, there is congestion that comes with that, but that's sort of like the good cholesterol versus bad cholesterol. So I think if we can reframe this as, you know, there's regional pressures to deliver cars through, and we figure out how to either push that to the edge of the, of the Mashpee Commons master plan, as well as making good shortcuts able, that's great. But then accept that we might need to slow cars down to build more capacity, because we actually fit more cars through if they're going a little bit slower, that actually benefits the walkability, the getting from Mashpee Commons to, to North Market Street, you know, and that idea that, you know, as a mixed-use neighborhood, slowing cars down going into the rotary might benefit on both the regional traffic and, and the, the goals of sort of a walkable neighborhood. So those are some sort of high-level planning thoughts. I think we'll, you know, there's, we have some good traffic engineers in, in New England that we could bring in and, and help us on that, I think, at a certain time and certain sort of lo, level of implementation that we get to. Uh, but we know, you know, we, we know it's a, it's a concern, so.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the, uh, and the, and I, I know it's, we're running along, but it was on my mind, and it was when Buff was talking earlier, when he first came in, and he was talking about being the center of the community, the place where you come out and you meet and greet, and you're running to your friends, and you may grab a cup of coffee, or you chat for a little bit, sitting on a bench, which I've done. But when, it's over twenty years now since I've moved here, I'll never forget why we moved here. And we moved here, basically, my wife and my three children, we left Medford just north of Boston, we came down here, had built here up in Boston, and I decided I'd come down. And, uh, never forget, we came down a few different times, my sister-in-law lived here, and we went to the Christmas event. And the Christmas event was just spectacular. And, um, it was the Mashpee. We come into Mashpee, we're going to the fireworks display and the Christmas events and the radio station, it was just amazing. And then it went from event, from event, they're all family events, and we're saying, we, in all this time until I moved here, I always thought it was the town of Mashpee. And it took me a while to realize it was Mashpee Commons. And then eventually, the town of Mashpee jumped on board and they started to participate with Mashpee Commons. And that's why Mashpee, to, in my eyes, has become such a wonderful place to live because it's just so inviting to families. And, um, it, it makes it a, I'm thrilled this is the place where I chose to live. And, um, because of the town, that participates now, and, and for what you started, and they picked up. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love the Christmas parade, too.
So I, I struggle with this conversation, as you know, we've had many. Been here long enough to have been a veteran of the original shiretche did back in the eighties, and I didn't like it. I felt like it was an exercise to go to a predetermined outcome. And, you know, as I look back on it, you know, somewhat true, somewhat not true, I think you had sort of a vision. And in, in this exercise, I've been, as you also know, a little frustrated because of trying to figure out where you're trying to get to. Um, and to some extent, that's made me feel a little better about this process, because I actually, uh, at this point, have concluded that you don't know exactly where you want to get to, and that there's, there's actually merit to this discussion with the community. And so I think that's to your credit. Um, you know, but there's a lot of uncertainty here. The one thing I do know that sort of counteracts that uncertainty is, the one thing I do know that's relatively certain is what ha, what our current zoning allows to happen on those parcels, and I'm pretty sure I'd hate it, whether you do it or you divest and you let somebody else do it. So, you know, our zoning tells people what they can't do, but also tells us pretty much what they can do. And I don't think what our zoning allows in that corridor area will be advantageous to the community. And so, to my mind, we don't really think about that very much. We've got a lot of zoning we don't think about very much, but what it does to us. Um, so I think it's worth having the conversation to see if there's a better way to do it. We are, you offer a, an unusual opportunity in that, because you do hold so much contiguous land, we do have the ability to talk about what gets built, and then also the transportation network around it, whereas if it is balkanized into smaller parcels for developers, we lose that. And you end up with, you know, mitigation, you put a traffic light here, but you don't really change anything. So, uh, you know, I have an open mind about it, um, I don't know where it's going to go. Um, but I think it's, it's a worthwhile conversation for us to have as a community. There are needs that we have, in particular on the housing on the other end, you know, either the, um, the old people want to get out of their single-family homes, or, or younger families who don't want to be in a single-family home, can't afford to be in a single-family home. Um, and so I think there's some interesting opportunities to service a need that exists within the town, and I've expressed those interests to you. I think, I view this much more as a housing development with, um, an enhancement of the, um, commercial and retail side, uh, to provide some job opportunities, but more than anything else, an opportunity to solve a local and regional housing need by creating a micro-market around rentals, so, um, you know, and I think there's a lot left to talk about, but I think it's an interesting opportunity for the community to engage in. Doesn't mean we're all going to like what you end up with, and by participating in the conversation, I don't think anybody should feel like, and I don't think you're expecting that somehow that means you're buying off on the end product. So that somebody's participation doesn't mean that they are bound to what the end, to liking what the end product is. At the end of the day, you're going to decide what you can afford and, and want to build, and we're going to look back and say, is that what we want as a community? And if it is, we can come to a meeting of the minds, and if it isn't, we don't, and that's that. So I, you know, I would encourage people to participate, um, because I think it's an interesting opportunity. Where it leads, it's hard to say at this point, but I think it, it, you know, it serves a need. At some point, I'd like us, and this is not your responsibility, but we have to have the secondary conversation, the extent we're allowing density and increased utilization of a property for a variety of benefits. You know, we need to keep some balance in mind about traffic generation, overall number of people who live in the community, and potentially look at doing some offsets. Does that mean it's all you? No, not necessarily. But we've got a lot of plans, we've got water supply plans, we've got wastewater plans, that are all predicated on a certain number. And we can make those plans easier and cheaper to do if we concentrate reaching that number in a defined area rather than allowing it to be diffusely spread about the community. But we'll kind of screw ourselves if we allow all the increased population density at the common site and everything else that was otherwise programmed in town. That's going to raise our price tag. So I want to, at some point, wrap that into this broader conversation, probably something the Planning Board should factor into their thinking about how they want to approach this as well. Offsets are hard. Offsets are really hard. TDR doesn't work very well, and I, I know all the issues associated with that, but, um, you know, we have to think about what it means to us, that we don't consume all the potential property tax increases that would come from this in providing, you know, wastewater treatment, pipes and pumps and facilities to a broader area than we already are planning to. Same with water supply, same with school transportation, everything across the board. So we have to work that into the conversation somewhere along the line so that we net out in a better place than we would otherwise be absent this conversation.
Um, just a quick, uh, just a quick comment, actually. I'm participating right now in the Housing Institute, put on by HAC. I find it very informative, and it somehow relates to exactly what you're looking to do, and it's talking about conforming and changing of zoning, it's not just, it is what it is because it's always been that way. And looking at what's best for the community. And they've used a lot of great examples in the classes of, is this really what you wanted the zoning to do, to provide this type of community? And you look at it, it's such an eyesore, but that's what the zoning allowed, and you, that's what it is, that's what you're going to get. So it was all about, you know, changing with the times and conforming, so, um, I, you know, I really have to say that the course itself, uh, I think we have, what, two more weeks left in the course, and, um, it's very informative. Um, and it's locally here, it's at the library from six to eight every Wednesday, but it's held different locations across the Cape, and, um, I think even, maybe even a member of your team might find it very informative. So, that's it.
Any other questions? Any last comments?
Well, I, I'd just like to say, Andrew brought up a bunch of issues, and, you know, I mean, plainly, we, we don't have a end. We don't have an end. We want it to be something that we feel is, uh, you know, attractive, durable, long-lasting, um, that will be here for generations. So the bones of it need to be right, and, uh, you know, we build our buildings to be hundred-year buildings, uh, not thirty-year buildings. And, Tom, you know that, right? So, so those are...
I like tech.
What? Those are investments that you...
You need to build schools. Yeah. You know, I should go build tech.
Those are investments that you need to, you know, the, the return is over, over many years. The reason you do that is because, because what I call the civic return, the, the, it's not just a financial return, it's a return for, for improving the community and, and that sort of, it's a intangible, you just feel better about being in this place that you've built. So I don't think we have, uh, you know, we have, both Russ and I and others have had experiences around the country of looking at places that have been done well, and of course, we'd want to take away from that. But actually, you know, we legitimately want to hear what the community has. It doesn't mean that we're not going to say, well, we think this is what you're saying, and then just try to sort of further define collectively, well, that, just the way you're saying it may not be possible, but this might be. So it's a, it's a dialogue, it's back and forth. And, uh, you know, if, if we come out of this process and can't go forward, then it would have been a failure for all, for all of us. But I think so far, the people that I've talked to, I mean, the, the intention, the well-intentioned, um, spirit that I feel like that, um, you know, we've connected with in the, in the, in the community is really exciting and admirable, and I just hope we can keep that spirit along the way. And, you know, when, like the wastewater, uh, uh, issue, which is, actually, some of this started, uh, by the commission coming to us and saying, you know, we have this horrible nitrogen problem, and the way we think it can be solved on the Cape is by encouraging more dense, uh, town centers, uh, because, uh, then you can treat the, the affluent more efficiently. So, so that was our, we were excited to be approached by them, and, uh, and we're, and so then, and then Andrew has been extremely patient in hearing our thought, thinking in the last year about it, but then I think I, I sat at this very, or stood at this very same thing when, uh, the, in front of the Planning Board, and I had jotted some notes down beforehand about, you know, how do I describe this? And then I realized, um, it was, it was an evolutionary thing for myself, I really realized, I don't want to push anything down anyone's throat, I really don't. I mean, I'm, you know, I, my age now has a seven in front of it, so, so I don't have to, you know, I don't want to spend the last part of my life fighting. I want to, I want to work with these young guys that are on my team and, and marry, and, and work with the town to try and facilitate something. So, uh, I'm hoping we can, we can do it and get started, and once we get the first part of it out, I think it'll be, uh, stimulative for everyone to get on board, and, you know, we'll adapt it, that things change, you know, needs change. And, you know, walkability to the schools, how do we, can we, I walked, uh, we went over to look at the solar array that's been built, uh, next to Stop and Shop, that's, you should go and look at it, it looks wonderful over there. I mean, that's something we never even thought about a couple of years ago. But getting across 151, that came up in one of the comments here, well, you know, it actually isn't that hard, but I think the speed limit is still fifty coming down from, uh, or, or something, does it really need to be that? Does that really, do, you know, to, for whatever it is from, from, uh, from the, where the police station is down to the rotary, do, maybe it could be twenty or twenty-five or something, and maybe there, just by doing that change, uh, the ability or the feeling about walking across the, or do we put an island in the middle so there's a pedestrian, uh, place that people feel, uh, safe to, a refuge? Pedestrian refuge, they call it. I mean, there's all these little tweaks that we can make that are really, but, you know, we need to do that together. Uh, and, and I think by doing it together, we can, we can actually make some real changes quickly and hopefully create a goodwill and not the suspicion that we're trying to shove something down people's, uh, I mean, I, I think maybe this is an unusual dynamic between a landowner, developer, and a town, but what's wrong with being unusual? The, the best part is that we could actually make it succeed, both, both parties, you know, you as representing the citizens and we as landowners. Because it is, it creates value for the town, it creates value for us, it allows us to, to be more active in these civic events that Tom referred to, or the parks, or, you know, so I think there's a lot of things that we can do collectively that I, I'm really excited about, and I hope the next decade of my, if I'm fortunate enough to be here for that long, uh, will be, uh, in implementing this. So thank you very much for your time tonight. And we are, our ears are open, uh, for those thoughts that you have tomorrow or the next day or whatever, uh, and we look forward to engaging with this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
I have one, I have one thing I just want to let people know about. The Lakewood Bay Reserve is holding, ironically, based on last night, um, a symposium for people, it's called, "Are You Ready for the Next Big Storm?" It's a workshop for hardy Cape Codders, and it's practical tips to keep people and their families safe and comfortable while contributing to Cape Cod's ability as a region to be resilient. So there's a lot of good sessions on, you know, what's coming with storm preparedness, you know, how do you prepare your house, how do you deal with, um, uh, emergency preparations, how do you deal with pets, how do you deal with after the storm impacts? It's November second, nine thir, nine to three o'clock, and they're taking reservations at the Lakewood Bay Reserve Visitor Center.
Does anybody else have any liaison reports?
Just actually, just want to congratulate, uh, one of my scouts just achieved Eagle, and just had his ceremony on Saturday, Patrick Flain, so another Mashpee Eagle Scout is in the town, so congratulations.
A bunch of them now, how many total? Do you have a total on that?
A lot.
I'd love to know the total.
It's a lot. Last few years, a lot.
Pass that down, we can post it.
Um, we have a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
All right, can we just post that on the board?